Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of February 4th, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, President, tonight is Ms. Quirk, Ms. Corbett, Ms. Whiteside, myself, Chair Chadwick, Mr. Sullivan, and General Counsel, Town Counsel, Mr. Bowen. Absent tonight is Mr. Bessie.
Thank you. I declare that there is a quorum present. Pledge of allegiance, Ms. Quirk?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would remain standing, please. A few days ago, we lost a longtime friend of the town of Wareham. Don Grafora was an EMT here in Wareham for almost three decades. He also was a great woodworker and just a really nice man, and he was taken much too soon. So I would ask that you have a moment of silence for him, please. If Mr. Buckland is online, is he there? He is? Okay. Is it okay with you, ladies and gentlemen, if we take Mr. Buckland, who is on here, for a quick discussion under 10B, and then we will go into the executive session afterwards?
I'll find out about that.
Is that okay? Thank you. Mr. Buckland, when you can, identify yourself, et cetera. Thank you. I asked him here this evening to talk a little bit about something, the One Stop Program, and he'll go from there.
Thank you very much. Ken Buckland, Director of Planning and Community Development. We have applied with the One Stop Program of the state, which is a grant, a wide-ranging grant program for the state of Massachusetts, to put in an article for a a program where we can attract businesses to our community and fill in the vacant storefronts that exist along Main Street. This program is set up so that we can market our community, which is what we're doing right now, and to entice people with a tax credit, $50,000 worth of tax credits, which is the maximum that they'll allow for the program. We submitted a letter of interest, an expression of interest to the community, for the community, to the state program, and received a notice that it did seem like we fit with their program so that we can make an application by June 4th of this year to make the, see if we make the cut and get the application that we're looking for.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a quick confirming my own memory. This involves giving businesses who go into vacant buildings a tax credit? Is that what this is all about?
That's right. We can offer tax credits to them to go into vacant spaces on Main Street.
I think this is a great program.
And certainly, the WRA would probably support it as well. Yeah. You do have a complete packet in here. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Buckland?
I would just agree with Ms. Corbett. I think this is a great program, and I think the One Stop Program offers us, you know, additional opportunities as well, and already has given us a grant for rewriting our zoning bylaws, so good thing to keep on.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else?
I think this is a smart thing for us. As everyone knows, there's a lot of vacant properties that are rundown in this town that I would love and have expressed many times before that we need to get more businesses in here. So I'm happy and I'm excited to see it.
Thank you, Mr. Buckland. Very much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chadwick, I will accept a motion under Item 4 to go into executive session, please. I move.
Yes. I move to go into executive session under Master of the Law, Section 30A, Section 21A, to consider the purchase of real property located at 80 Marion Road, Wareham, showing as lots 1002A and 1002B on the sewer agreement plan, Assessors Map 48. The Chair declares that an open meeting may be detrimental to the negotiating position of the public body.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session for the stated reasons. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. We will go into executive session, and we will come back into open session subsequent to that. So we're going to take approximately a three-minute recess so that the WCTV can clear the room. Thank you. We are now back in open session. We have finished with our executive session, so we will go to residents' comments. Is there anyone here in the audience who wants to address us? Anybody out there? Mr. Day? No? Okay. I will go to announcements. Ms. Quirk?
Just a quick announcement. I wanted to let folks know, although we have talked about this before, that several of us are in the process of drafting an earth removal bylaw for consideration at our upcoming town meeting, if we can be ready for that. And this draft bylaw largely follows the form and procedure of the Carver Earth Removal Bylaw. And we expect to have it in shape so that we can go forward with some public hearings on it and let people review it and give us some comments. I believe the thought is to have those in front of the Select Board, as opposed to the Bylaw Review Committee, although it could be either.
I think maybe we get a bigger audience than the Bylaw Review Committee.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so when you would be ready to go forward, let us know.
Okay. Should be a matter of weeks.
Okay.
It has to be a matter of weeks.
It has to be, yeah. And I would say maybe in two weeks you have the hearing, so that, because when the warrant opens and closes, you don't want to be criticized for not listening to the public before you submit.
Yeah, and I think that's an excellent point, which means we probably need to notice it fairly soon.
Like, yeah. Okay.
Very soon.
Okay. And we're meeting in two weeks, and then we're having an off-cycle meeting on the 25th just to close the warrant, so you need to get it done.
Yeah, and also go before the fin.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All set? Ms. Corbett?
I want to let everyone know the Friends of the Library are having a yarn, fabric, and notions sale Friday, February 28th, from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Saturday, March 1st, from 9:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Cash or check only, and BYOB, bring your own bags, please. And then on May 24th, we're having the Oyster Fest 2025 from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. in Bessie Park, 100-plus vendors, live music, food, drinks, and a lot of fun. So mark your calendars. And that's it.
May what? 24th?
24th, yep.
Rain date of the 25th?
Yes.
Thank you. That's it? Thank you.
I have a proclamation for Black History Month.
Let me do my announcements first, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. The dog licenses are available to be purchased, or if you're a certain age, you get one free. Community events applications are also open, and they are open until April 18th. So the purpose of the Community Events Committee is to jumpstart and to encourage things that will benefit the town, and they have to be nonprofits and really startups. So I believe you're actually on that? Are you on that now?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And then, I'm guessing Mr. Sullivan may talk about this, but Lopes Playground, which was authorized at our town meeting to have a complete rebuild, the old wooden equipment will be coming down in the next couple of weeks, I think. There's been a lot of information put out. The playground and perimeter path will be 100% ADA compliant, 100% accessible. The ground covering is the shredded rubber with the matting, so there will be absolutely no issues of mobility, limited people who would not be able to access the playground, which is the case right now. So I just want to let you know that that's something that's been in the works for several years, and I appreciate the support from the community preservation people with town meeting, which overwhelmingly voted for it, and we're going to have a great playground there.
What was that certain age you said? You said something about a certain age? You didn't say what the age was, though, for...
[laughing]
I was trying to get that from Judith.
He was trying to make fun of me. Seventy. So, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Those are mine.
You laugh now.
Yes, do wait.
Just you wait.
Yes.
All right. This evening, I have a proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas since the bicentennial year of 1976, Americans of all walks of life have come together during the month of February to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas these accomplishments are more remarkable for having been won at the cost of great struggle and sacrifice by men and women who came to these shores in chains and by their descendants, and whereas the authors of these accomplishments in Massachusetts' history include the Freedom Fighters of the 54th Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry and the 5th Regiment Massachusetts Volunteer Cavalry, the first and most famous unit of Black Union soldiers raised in the Civil War, Phyllis Wheatley, the first American Black, excuse me, the Black American to publish a book of poetry, Crispus Attucks, the first casualty of the American Revolution, Ed Mona, nope, I'm missing it, sorry, all over the place with this, Edward Jones of Amherst College, the second Black American to earn a college degree, Ed Mona Lewis, the first professional Black sculptor who learned her craft in Boston, Jan Metzger, inventor who revolutionized the shoe manufacturing industry, W.E.B. DuVoyce, pioneer scholar and civil rights activist, Edward Brooke, the first Black senator elected by popular vote, Deval Patrick, the first elected Black governor in Massachusetts. And whereas captive Africans and free people of color were already part of the American story in the colonial era, and whereas the Black residents of Massachusetts have fought for a collective defense and freedom from the Revolution and Civil War to the present, including the 5th Regiment Massachusetts Volunteer Cavalry, who are among those who delivered the news of freedom in Texas on June 19th, 1865, and the 54th Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry. And whereas, to its shame, Massachusetts participated in the slave trade since 1638, but to its honor, in 1783, became the first state in the New Nation to abolish slavery as inconsistent with other, with our own conduct and constitution, thereby demonstrating our determination to live up to historic ideals as we strive to build a better, common future. And whereas a former President Barack Obama proclaimed, "Every American can draw from the story of hard-won progress, which only defines the African-American experience but also lies the heart of our nation as a whole." Now, therefore, we do by here proclaim the month of February in the year 2025 as Black History Month, and urge all residents to mark this occasion, to participate fittingly in observance with celebrations and recognition throughout the month, and witness whereof we and here too set our hands this fourth day in February 2025. Sign the Select Board.
Any other announcements? No. Okay, excellent. No appointments, reappointments, no hearings, licenses and permits. Town business. Item A. I have spoken with Ms. Quirk, who has actually been a representative to Serpent for the past year and something, more than that?
Well, I was on the planning board, yes, for a couple of years.
For a couple of years. Excellent. Our representative was Alan Slaven, and as of the annual meeting on January 22nd, he no longer is that, so it's appropriate for us to have a Select Board member. And Ms. Quirk was volunteered, voluntold? I think it was volunteer. You've been there, you know the ropes, so.
Happy to do it.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
Yes, sorry. I move to appoint Ms. Sherri Quirk to the Serpent, which is the representative of Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Ms. Quirk as the Select Board's representative or member. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
May I vote?
Oh, yes.
Aye.
Yes. Thank you for asking. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. Discussion and possible vote to close Main Street from British Landing through Bessie Park on May 24th, 2025, with a rain date of May 25th, 2025, for a festival. Ms. Corbett talked about this earlier. An individual named Lorna Brunel came before the Wareham Redevelopment Authority about a year and a half ago and talked about her way of engaging citizens in towns. She does something called sip and stroll. She does it in Middleborough, she does it in Kingston Mall and other places. She has about 100 vendors who will come with her. We were told that the previous, that the people who have been running the Wareham Oyster Fest are taking a year off this year. So I went to her and asked if she would be interested in filling in the gap, and she jumped at it. And instead of closing Main Street from essentially Bessie Park through, I think, through the fire station, which is what the previous Oyster Fest was doing, Ms. Brunel is saying that she would like it from Bessie Park all the way back to British Landing, so there would not be any impeding of the traffic to Toby Hospital, and she would be using her, Mr. Warren's parking lot as a setup for the vendors. Mr. Sullivan, who is in charge of town properties, has been approached to give permission to use Bessie Park for vendors as well. That would be something that he would do, but I think it's an exciting new slant on bringing business to town, and I'm hoping that you would go along with this. So it's a request from her, but to us. Any questions?
I have no questions.
Motion?
Any questions?
Sounds like a great idea.
I agree.
Motion?
I move to close Main Street from British Landing through Bessie Park on May 24th, 2025, with a rain date of May 25th, 2025, for the festival.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. The next is a request to remove a handicap designation for space in front of 25 Union Avenue in Onset. The person who previously held that space as a handicap space is deceased, and there are no family members who would be using that space, so it's appropriate to take the handicap designation away. And we gave you a map, I believe, of where it is. Yes, we did. Although, if you can find it on...
That was one that was specially added for the person.
That is correct. Yes, it was specifically added for this one individual who resided at the location. And it's a family member who's asked that it be taken away.
Okay.
And it's an appropriate action for us to take as road commissioners. Is that correct? Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I move to remove handicap designation for a space in front of 25 Union Avenue, Onset.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to remove the handicap designation. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. Should I let Mr. Menard know about that?
Yeah, Richard.
Yep.
There should be a notification sent to the Municipal Maintenance Department.
Okay.
Copying myself, please.
Yep. Okay. Let's skip down to F, because I want to spend some time on E. Discussion and possible vote to set the speed limit within thickly settled areas in Wareham to 25 miles per hour, or whatever. This Chapter 90, Section 17C, was adopted at the October town meeting. There's been a lot of discussion over the time that I've been here about people speeding. And the adoption of the law was the first step in letting, we notified the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of DOT that we had taken that action, and now we can do what we had hoped to be able to do, which is set a specific speed limit in thickly settled areas. Questions? Comments?
So this will then result in signs being placed on Route 6 and Cranberry Highway? Nope? Okay.
They're, no, because that's the state road. This is only for our roads. In other words, we could, I think I gave you some examples in here.
Fearon Hill, Blount Charlie.
So the roads that come into Wareham would be posted with that, and they would say, I thought I had an example.
What roads come into Wareham that aren't Route 6 or Cranberry Highway?
Fearon Hill.
Lots of ways.
Okay.
Blount Charlie.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yes, sir. And Situate does do it and has done it, so, yeah. Go ahead.
I've driven by it very quickly many times.
Yep. Yeah, he blew that one.
No pun intended.
But what you can do, can you speak into the mic, please? I don't know what we should.
What you can do is, you can put up a sign on Cranberry Highway that says something to the effect of, unless otherwise marked, the base speed limit for the town of Wareham shall be 25 miles an hour. So it's not a problem to put it up on a state highway. It's just the state highway, and we don't get to set the speed limit on the state roads. It's going to be quote-unquote "otherwise marked," so. And you also have to notify the Mass Department of Highways.
We did.
And they usually have some, in their uniform manual of traffic devices, they have the magic words that you can put up on the sign.
We had all of that, yeah. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I would just speak up in support of 25 miles an hour as the speed limit. I think that a lower speed limit is appropriate, and I think it helps to accommodate multi-use of the roads. People walking and bicycling and using other kinds of vehicles, I think, do better when cars are going a little bit more slowly and people are more thoughtful in how they're driving, as the bicyclists and walkers should be with their activities as well. But strongly in support of it and hope that we move forward with it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If you really, I mean, I really was digging deep in this. MIT has this map of all of the road, you know, signage in Massachusetts. You can get lost in this stuff, and I sort of did. Anyway, any other questions? And if not, I'll accept a motion.
I have no other questions. All right. I move to set the speed limit within thickly settled areas in Wareham to 25 miles per hour, per acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 90, 17C, accepted at the October 28th, 2024, town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. And again, I will notify Mr. Menard. We've already notified the state, but we'll go over it with Mr. Menard. Discussion and possible vote to release the performance bond regarding Mr. Warren's property at 59 Main Street. You have a copy of a letter from the Planning Board and from the Director of Planning. Mr. Warren has met the requirements for the Planning Board to release that performance bond, which we have to, okay. So I would accept a motion to release that bond.
I move to release the performance bond regarding Mr. Warren's property at 59 Main Street.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to release that bond. Is there any further discussion on that motion, this performance bond? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. Let's go back to Review Board's committee's vacancy list. And you do have a current list, but maybe not totally current list in the packet. We had held this off when Ms. Quirk was not here, at her request, and I think we need to let the public know that there are many vacancies. Maybe if you're the liaison to some of these committees, you could speak up for the need, that kind of stuff. But Ms. Quirk, you had a couple of things that you wanted to say.
Yeah, just two. One is, I noted there wasn't a vacancy for the Planning Board Associate Member. As a former Associate Member of the Planning Board, I think it's important to have that listed and to show it as a position that is possible to be filled. The second is, in looking at this, I asked whether, I asked myself and then asked Judy whether we have a bicycling committee. And it turns out we had, but we don't. It was sunsetted, and so what I would like to talk about in this context is that we revive the bicycling committee. I would propose that we revive it as a five-person committee for efficiency. I think seven may be a little bit too large, and that the members of it serve one, two, and three-year staggered terms, and that we seek to fill it when we can act on it. I know that since I became the Wareham representative to the South Coast Bike Way Alliance, there has been a lot of interest and activity in Wareham as one of the missing links, I guess we can call it that, in the South Coast Bike Way, and I think lots of people from inside and outside of the town who would like to help us move it forward. So I think having a committee would help in that regard.
Would you be able to write up something so that we could vote on it?
Absolutely.
Presuming you guys don't object.
I have no issues with that whatsoever. I've been looking at and possibly trying to figure out how to bring a bike park for the youth to Wareham for years, so I would be...
That's a different kind of bike.
It's still biking.
Yeah, so I have a question. When you say bicycling committee, what is the purview of that committee?
It's, the committee is, I think, the way that it was constituted before was to support the activities aimed at the bike way that is part of the South Coast Bike Way Alliance, that linkage of, you know, New Bedford, Fall River, towns between us and them, and the Cape. I think we could do something broader than that and look at other types of bikeways in the town, and as well as trying to enhance bike safety in the town. So I see all of that as part of it, and would also have to say in deference to our town administrator, and I think to you, that when we talk about bike paths, we're talking about multi-use paths, and we're talking about paths that are allowing sort of non-vehicular, motor vehicular transportation.
Okay, thanks.
I have a copy of their old mission statement.
She saw it.
Oh, God. Would you like me to read it out, or?
Sure, go ahead.
The mission of the Wareham Community Pathway Committee is to provide professional advice and technical expertise to the Board of Selectmen, Select Board now, with the purpose of providing a safe, clean, aesthetic, enjoyable place for all ages to walk, jog, ride, or bicycle year-round, in order to reconnect with nature and our neighbors, promote health, and preserve the natural... the natural environment, which I think is what you were saying.
Yeah, that's more eloquently stated, but yes.
Which is why they weren't my words, I read them.
My bike park fits underneath that.
So it's really not on the agenda, so we, we can give you an idea of our support, but we put it on the agenda for next time around, if that, to, to reinstate it, if you will. Is that okay?
Yes, that's right, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on any of the other boards here? From you, Ms. Quirk?
No.
No?
Just to, and, you know, I think the Associate Planning Board member, I think, would help to provide some continuity for the Planning Board.
No? We talked briefly about the Alternative Energy Committee, though?
Yes.
Today? So I think you might be thinking of changing the numbers on that one, too, but you and I and Ms. Wool, Denise Wool?
Yes.
Might be working on that?
That's right.
Okay.
I think that's a good direction to go.
Okay. The Board of Library Trustees needs three members, is that correct? Or is it not correct?
Four right now, yeah, three.
Okay. Affordable Housing Trust needs a member at large. Community Events needs some, is that correct?
I, honestly, I don't know, I just got on the committee.
Okay.
Not sure how many members they have.
Community Preservation does have a vacancy for one. Conservation Commission for two Associate Members. Council on Aging, four members and two associates, is that correct?
They have six members now, I think that's too high.
Okay, so can you double-check that?
Yep.
Okay, and are they in, also in the process of bringing their board number from nine down to possibly seven?
Seven, yeah.
Okay. Cultural Council, one member, Historic District Commission, one member and three alternatives. Minnetonka Forest Committee, one member, Recycling Committee, one member and two associates. Veterans Council, five members. The Veterans Council is a really big deal than we have one member, and I feel very strongly that's something that I would love to see reinvigorated. Any other ones that I have left off?
I think Ms. Moran was asking to be read.
Oh, yeah. You need to step forward and identify yourself, sorry.
I have my elements here. Julie Moran, 79 Green Gate Lane. I'm just thinking, it was interesting at the last town meeting, it was my impression that there were quite a few people that we hadn't seen in town meeting in a while, or hadn't seen before. We all know that we are struggling with populating these committees, the volunteers. Could we, and I'm happy to participate, a group of us who are volunteers, make a pitch to those at town meeting? Because I think it's important for them to understand that it's work, that how rewarding it is, how helpful it is to the community. And I'm just thinking, while we have a captive audience, we just make a little statement. I don't know, we'd have to figure out how we would, Rich, how we would, is it something that we create an article? I don't know, but.
You'd have to have the moderator say that that was something, I think.
Yeah.
Mr. Bowen, go ahead.
You could have an article written, something like that, so.
Sorry. I was saying, no, no, it's, it's long habit, you know. You could have an article in the form of a resolution, you know, be it resolved that we really need volunteers to make things work, and be it resolved that we have a room full of potential volunteers before us today, now therefore. Sales pitch.
Okay. I just.
I can help write it if you need.
I'm happy, thank you, Rich. I'm happy to help with that, I just feel that we need more folks. We have a lot of people wearing multiple hats as volunteers, so why not?
Great suggestion, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I'm going to say this, and I'm probably going to get yelled at. I see everybody complaining on Facebook, the town this and the town that, and you know what? I've said it before, plenty of opportunity to come out, represent your town. Perfect thing right here, now's the time to put up or shut up, in my opinion, so. Here it is. You guys want to sit here on Facebook, talk, come to some meetings, join, volunteer, and don't tell me you don't have the time. Thank you.
I think we could, we could modify that a little bit.
Yes, yes. It's just every day there's another post on Facebook, and I make a recommendation and.
I know, I see it.
Might be worth the Select Board reconstituting the volunteer luncheon appreciation dinner.
Well, in order to do that, we would have to have money, and I don't want somebody saying, "Yeah, that's not very good money well spent."
Invite those who are interested in volunteer.
They could have lettuce sandwiches.
Hey, we can figure something out.
I, I'd be happy to do that, I mean, we've tried many ways, I mean, we had the Discover Wareham thing a couple of, we, we continue to try, it's not that we aren't trying.
You have to want to.
Yeah.
And it's not, from that perspective, just, I'd love to attract more, but I think sometimes the volunteers do feel undervalued, so just a small gesture like that helps out every now and again.
Yeah, no, I think when we, yeah, I agree. We are totally unappreciated. Let's skip down to HI, to I. Sponsor an article regarding fees and bylaws. I gave you a page 99, and I did talk with Ms. Moran about this because she's at the Bylaw Review Committee. I would like to change the language in, whatever it is, Division 12, Article whatever, Section 3, under the junk, old metal, secondhand dealer shop, dealer shop, and automatic amusement device, video game. The penalty at the moment says $100, and I would like it to say, from time to time, as the Select Board may promulgate, we can't make suggestions on the other section of the bylaw because they have to go before the Planning Board, they have to come from somebody else, but this is a fee that we set as Select Board members. And what I have seen in terms of what it takes to write up, one of the violations is, it's a lot of paper, and it would be helpful to have something other than $100 bucks from time to time. So that would be something that I would ask this board if they would be interested in sponsoring that, and I can let you think about it, or, you know, say, let's go ahead, because it would, and I did ask Ms. Moran, they just simply ran out of time to be able to change that fee structure. The fee structure should be malleable, they should not be specifically into the bylaws, because every time you want to change one, you have to go back to town meeting, and that doesn't really make much sense. So that was something that her committee was not able to address, and I asked her if she would be offended if we brought it forward. One more time, back up here.
We have gone through. Julie Moran, 79 Green Gate Lane. We have gone through, and there are a number of areas in the bylaw where we are seeing exactly that, Chairman White side. We are also talking with some of our department heads, Derek's my next call, about, there are so many fees in various amounts. Ideally, although I don't think, I'm not sure we're ready for that, every department who was, who the bylaw applied to and were the enforcing group would have their own set of fees, but I don't know, we just don't know at this point where they might be there. But there are quite a few that, something like numbering, Road Commissioners, Select Board is now the Road Commissioner, so there are quite a few that if the Select Board is willing for those that come to your jurisdiction, we are prepared to have that blanket statement from time to time, obviously subject to Mass General Laws. So we have made those kinds of changes, proposed changes.
So you would be willing to, I'm sorry, would you be willing to sponsor that as?
Sure. I think it could be another, should it be another article as part of what we do?
Yes, yeah. So it would be amount of fine as promulgated by the Select Board each day, from time to time, each day is considered a new offense?
Correct.
Okay. Do you guys have a problem, do you individuals have a problem with that?
Uh-uh.
Do you have a problem with that? Then if, if you don't mind, we'll throw it right back on you? Great.
Okay, so.
I have, there's a word that some people in this town don't know, you're one of them. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Notice.
Where'd that go? There we go.
Discussion and possible vote to hold the Spring Annual Town Meeting on April 28th, 2025. Would you read it into the record, please, sir?
Town of Wareham Select Board, notice of 2025 Spring Town Meeting and Town Election Commonwealth of Massachusetts Plymouth to the Constables of the Town of Wareham, greetings. In the name of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and in accordance with the provisions of Division 1, Article 1, Section 3 of the bylaws of the Town of Wareham amended, you are hereby directed to notify and warn legal voters of the Town of Wareham that the general business portion of the 2025 annual, annual town meeting has been called by the Town Wareham Select Board to be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 28th, 2025, and the election of officers will be held from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Tuesday, May 6th, 2025. The last day for submission of citizens' petition articles for insertion in the warrant is 5:00 PM, Monday, February 24th, 2025. The warrant for this meeting will close on Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, and you are hereby directed to serve this notice by posting tested copies thereof in at least one public place in each precinct within the town, town on or before Wednesday, March 5th, 2025. Hereof fail not to, not, and make due return of this posting with your doings thereon to the town clerk if under our hands at Wareham this fourth day of February in the year 2025. True test of copy, sign, Wareham Select Board.
And the Scrivener's error is in the line where it says Wednesday, March 5th, it should say Wednesday, February 5th. Sorry. All set with that Scrivener's error? Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion other than that? I'll accept that as a motion, please. So moved, as read?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, as read. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I will go for roll call vote, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. There will be a special within the annual town meeting, and there are different deadlines for that. We will now move on to the Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Sullivan, we've been missing you. You're, you've been here, but you haven't given us any news, or good news, or bad news, or news.
Not many people have let me know that they miss me, so thank you.
You're welcome.
The governor filed an updated Municipal Empowerment Act, she alerted us at the MMA and then did make the, did follow through on that, so some of the highlights are, you know, empowering local, localities, generate more local revenue. So what does that mean? Potentially increasing the local lodging tax, increasing local meals tax, and you can create a new up to five, it's up to, that there's some already existing percent local option and motor vehicle excess. That's tough for us, because obviously we, you know, Wareham isn't, isn't a community where all our residents can just reach into their pockets all the time, so we would have rather received aid packages from the Commonwealth than trying to push it on to local communities. I think that just continues the cycle where wealthy communities are more likely to vote in more taxes for services than communities where, you know, some of your residents struggle. So it won't say that's a big help to us, but, you know, we'll look into that and see what, what those increases would be, and if there's any appetite bringing them forward if they're, they're enacted. Again, that can't automatically happen, the residents have to vote that in. That's not something you, the Select Board or myself could do, so. Good one, create new property tax exemptions for seniors, something that we've worked on in the last town meeting, and there's some, some additional ideas as well as some flexibility where it's kind of what you were talking about, the fees. It doesn't stagnate it, so it allows it for inflation to follow some of the exemptions for the seniors, which I think is a, is a good thing. Works on addressing long-term benefit funding pressures, so that's the OPEB, to look at some, addressing the unfunded liabilities. So OPEB is, is other post-employment benefits, mainly that's your retiree health insurance, and with the new laws that came in over the last decade, essentially they take it, if you had to fund every current employee and retired employee and fund them forward, what's your total obligation? Ours is over $100 million when it comes down to it, and that's why we put money into the OPEB stabilization fund, as we're slowly, maturely offsetting that. But I think we're maybe at, you know, we're at single-digit percentages against that, you know, with our $3.5 million. But it's good to put money in there, it helps with our rating, bond ratings and such, shows that we have a plan. There's also, there's some, I don't think this would be necessary for us, but Regional Board of Assessors that helps the smaller communities out in Western Massachusetts, and, you know, creating some additional temporary flexibilities in post-retirement employees. I don't think it's a shock to anybody that's trying to hire, that municipalities are feeling the same effects of having really good qualified people retiring and not being able to fill the positions. A lot of the positions are pretty darn unique, you're not, you're pulling from the same labor market as the 351 other communities. And when you do a one-hour commute from us, we're basically reaching up to Boston, you know, to the Cape and into Rhode Island, and that's who we're competing with for, for positions, very, so.
And I can back that, because I'm seeing that firsthand in Dennis, with the town down there.
So some good news makes permanent COVID-era public meeting flexibility, so again, being able to use Zoom or some of the other meetings, you know, doing the hybrid, so it's, that's a good thing to be able to have that flexibility, address the double polls, if, if you've ever seen the double utility polls, and they drive you crazy, they're ugly, this is trying to give us some ability. You know, you're already able to do double fines, but it's really trying to get the utilities to do something with that. And if you've ever tried to get a utility to do anything, see Cranberry Highway to move polls, it's, it's not easy. One of the other, reform some of the procurement laws, at the last, the last session, the, they had actually updated where the, some of the 30B standards for going out for RFPs for schools went up from 50,000 to 100,000, and now they're trying to bring the municipalities along to that. Does not make sense to me why the schools would be able to and not the towns, we are, we are essentially the same structure when it comes down to it, so it'd be nice for them to set those up. Updating some of the borrowing rules for school projects, so you can borrow instead of 30 years, go out to 40 years on some of the MSBA. I'm uncomfortable with those, I don't like borrowing for that long, because, you know, essentially now with, they say, well, it helps with the longevity of the lifetime of a project, we don't want to end after 30 years and say, hey, now we're going out for, you know, 40 years, now we need another school right away. We want to try to have some gaps and give the, if the residents are good enough to do a debt exclusion, to, to take some of the pressure off of them. And here's an interesting one, help prevent overdoses by declassifying fentanyl strips as drug paraphernalia, and that's the fentanyl testing strips. So they're considered drug paraphernalia right now, so you could actually be arrested for them, but the thought is, if you can test what you're going to, and, you know, that's, it can be optimistic, but in some of those cases, it could help prevent overdoses, because people could see if it's a tainted supply or something, so. Not a bad thing if you have those to be able to test. So that's, that's some of the highlights, maybe lowlights in the beginning when we're talking about taxes. The other thing I just wanted to go over, so when we're talking about local revenue, we did get our first bite at the state aid. Unfortunately, our net new aid is roughly negative 400,000 when it comes down to it. You know, we had, we had the small $75 per pupil, we have roughly 220 students, so it's about $150,000 increase there, but then charter tuition reimbursement went down several hundred thousand. hundred thousand. We don't budget this, but the school choice receiving went down substantially. Our general government aid went up really well, but we don't segregate the funds, the school and the town, we always sort of go together, so that way, one side, you're not doing this, we're trying to keep steady. On the assessments, charter school and school choice sending was fairly good, you know, about 20,000, but the retired teachers' health insurance went up by over 400,000, which was roughly a 26% increase. So, you know, all told, there was, it was, it's not a banner year for budgeting for FY26, which is, you know, considering the state aid is 25% of our revenue. So we think we've, you know, we always budget conservatively so that we can absorb some, some years like this and hope that it's a, it's a one-off, and I know it's not much to live by hope. One of the things that confused me was through the, you know, the fair share tax, how much money's been going to the state schools and the community colleges when our, when our base students are really where you'd want the, the money to go to. One of the good things they did, which is good but bad in a weird way, is they gave free and reduced lunch across the Commonwealth for every community, which is noble. However, we already qualified for that. So now you have the other wealthier communities getting the same benefit, which was roughly a 1, 1.6 to 1.8 million dollar benefit to us. So it actually separates us even further when it comes down to us, the way I look at it. So I'd love to see the legislators do, do a one-time adjustment to Chapter 70 to kind of fix that gap if you could, but, you know. So that's, we'll see how the, it's tough, you used to be able to go through with Deval Patrick, you knew as governor, his budget was the one that usually what you ended up with, that's the, the numbers. Baker, Charlie Baker, his were usually, legislator knocked him down a little bit, so he knew not to know, and I just don't have a sense yet for, for the legislature and this governor as to which one, so I would think, I'm hoping this is about as low as it, it gets. So we had our first, just one of the first storms, snowstorms where we're calling out plows, and this is sort of a time to remind everybody, we use two things, we use our own employees for plowing, but we also do hired plows. 28 of the 25 responded to the storm, so that's a good, good response rate, but for people to understand, we used to have 85. So concentrations are what you call the main drag, so the main roads, main arteries, you want to make sure that those are clean, and then the secondaries, and then the privates and other smaller thereafter. So it's, it is a slower timeframe for, for folks probably than what they're used to. If we have a major storm, it could be, it could be a substantial change for, for people. So I just need to set that reminder, I understand how frustrating it can be. The, where I live, and we had a little over three inches, they did not call the plows out whatsoever, so Wareham was down to, you know, when I was in here, was down to black pavement when, you know, we were just snow. So it's, it was kudos to Mr. Menard and his team, and I think we get a lot of return on our investment with the municipal maintenance department. And some more tour of the good news. We were alerted the Fearing Hill Bridge is now weight restricted to six ton. Well, for you and I, that doesn't really matter, I don't know size of your vehicle, but it's, but that does impact fire services, the fire truck, our ambulances, believe it or not, snow plows for our large, our large plows, and the school buses. So there's some rerouting going on, you know, it's, and our public safety officials are, we're trying to figure something out. We've been working on that bridge right now, doing engineering on it, has been, for lack of a better term, held up for a little while through the Division of Marine Fisheries because of smelt concerns, and that's type of fish, so. So, you know, we're, we're trying to push that forward. It is, that is our bridge, it does not qualify for the small bridge projects, and as of right now, this is a, it's roughly four and a half to $5 million project. There's grants, there's loans, you got to finish the engineering, and so this could be something that's several years going on. We're going to see if there's some alternatives that, that we can do. The bridge, you know, they go through everything. The bridge had in 1985 extra metal put underneath, but this is the Mastat through their, their reviews and such, if just, they're the ones making that designation, not us. So, yeah, I know, so you're right, 1985, I was just thinking it's not that, that long ago, but, you know, but 1985 to us is like 1945 to 1985, when it comes down to it. So, so that's, that's some of the information there, and we will continue moving forward. We have, I believe, March 13 is when we do the all-day budget hearing, the departments have been working on their budgets, trying, trying to make things worth, work. The school department's been excellent on, on working with us, and they voted the 3.75% increase, which is where we're trying to land with everybody, and if there's anything we can do, we're going to try and get a little bit going. It used to be, you know, everybody would think a three or 3.75% interest is, increases is a lot, but, you know, with what everybody's experienced over the last few years, trying to live like that isn't, isn't exactly easy, so. This is probably why I don't show up in person, or else.
Can you speak to Bayview Park?
Well, the Bayview Park, it's, we're a little bit stagnant now due to the weather, obviously not pouring concrete and freezing weather and some of those aspects, so.
Aren't you ahead of schedule?
We, we, we were ahead of schedule beforehand, it's, it's looking good, but I never promise anything until we get closer. Our ideal goal is not to impact the summer, we'd like to have it done before Memorial Day, so. Yeah, so, but they've, they've done some nice things along there. I did apply to Community Preservation for two different projects for this upcoming town meeting. One is towards the end of Swift Beach, and that's basically if you go down Swift Beach Road, you have at the end, it says no parking, people do park there, but it's a road to nowhere, which is eroding, and what we're trying to do is give a better recreational access, including some turnarounds, plus some amenities for the residents, and have a really nice entry point for one of our, you know, it's a great beach area, it deserves it. I did, didn't have it in the plan, but mentioned bike racks, anybody said, told them I bring some joy to some folks for the area, so it's a nice project. We were coming in, speaking to the engineer after consulting with the Community Preservation Committee, they did not vote on it, but it seemed to be a favorable reception, they thought we might be coming in a little light, so the total ask, which, you know, could, is going to be, I think we've brought it up to about 250,000. Our goal would be to use the municipal maintenance and to offset some of the costs, and then Swift Beach Citizens Group has volunteered to donate some money towards Mobi Mats and such to continue around it. So it's a nice little project, and it's nice to continue on with what we've put into the area from the, from the playground, beautiful playground, to continue that, and really keep on updating some of our beautiful areas. Then the other one was a $60,000 request to basically just get a, get a review of the envelope of Hammond School, see out what we need to do to, to, to fix it, it's getting, it's getting a little tough there, so. That is a historic building, so it's, it's a good use for the funds.
Just curious, what could be the end use of the Hammond School?
It's, do you, do you want the Greatest Show on Earth pitch? It could be anything. Yeah, so. Currently, the Christopher Donovan School utilizes it, that's, it's really, they lease it from the town. Then the other side is used by the Wareham Tigers through cheer, through wrestling, some others, so, you know, between that green space and having that building, I do think it's, it's a good use for the community to keep that up to date. There's lots of, there's lots of future uses if we can, you know, if there's ever an ability to give our recreational and team some, something better, some indoor uses elsewhere, you know, that we've talked about from, you know, you could do anything from mini-markets to educational, there's, I talked about a place in, in North Kingsdown, Rhode Island called Biomes, where we used to drive down there from, from Massachusetts with our kids, which actually had basically almost all the fish from there against a bay in tanks and touch a tank, and engaging into getting them enjoying the, not just the environment, but what our, what our community has to offer and what our oceans and waters, and it was really good educational, and kids have birthday parties there, you know, so. There were no smelts in the tank. But some of that, you know, those are the types of things, so we have a good opportunity, you know, to, to make something out of it, and, you know, don't want the building to just rot away, so.
So another question I hesitate to ask but must. A series of presidential executive orders came out and for the moment have been put on hold. Is there any point in talking about that, or is it too unclear what may be applicable to us to discuss it?
Did you see the side eye you got?
I think like all of us, it's about, it's clear as mud, is what the, but the, you know, obviously we're concerned about some of the impacts of community development block grant funding, some of the other potential grants, you know, there's, because it was so broad, if it were to be implemented, I think it would have impacted our schools as well, and some of the funding, so, because the schools do receive, obviously outside of the budget, federal funding and grant forms. So, you know, it's something that worth monitoring, we're trying to get guidance and work together with the Master Municipal Association to, to try and figure out where they'd be. Hopefully they continues in abeyance and we don't see it come back. You know, I've used hope a few too many times tonight.
And you've probably heard the saying that hope is not a plan, but you know that.
My father used to say something about your hands and hope, but, you know.
Liaison Initiative Reports.
You on you, Judy?
Wow. Liaison Initiative Reports, Ms. Quirk?
Nothing more.
No?
I have none.
Okay. I only have one. I had asked all of you if you had some suggestions that you would like our new state senator or rep to work on, and I did send Senator Duner the following hopes. She will be coming to see us, but I, she wanted to know what we wanted to talk about before she came to see us, and so I sent the following. Support the town in any efforts to get funding to revitalize Main Street Wareham in accordance with the redevelopment plan which calls for accessing the Wareham River behind Merchant's Way, which entails asking DOT for railroad crossing. Support any and all efforts from the town and all cities and towns to control the siting of large solar projects. Okay? Support our continued efforts to have mobile homes counted as affordable housing. We previously have twice sent to Senator Pacico our home rule petition to have that accomplished. One of our 17 mobile home parks was able to buy itself from the previous owner, so it's clear that those housing units must be considered affordable housing. Passage of a bill which aids cities and towns in their efforts to build new police, fire, and EMS buildings, in other words, the same kind of thing that they do for schools. And I know that Mr. Sullivan has already worked with her on other issues, but I think this was pretty much certainly what we would have liked, so I will invite her to a future meeting, I need your absences, but to just come and, you know, chat with us, and Mr. Gasky as well, for the times that you're not going to be here.
Oh, through March I'll be here, it's just that one week in April.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the, I will tell you from Senator Duner, the engagement's been excellent, the outreach, so.
Yeah, excellent.
I also have one request to add to that, if that's okay. I would like to extend an invite to Wareham Police Chief, Wareham EMS Director, and both Fire Departments, and Mr. Menard, just so she can see the hardworking people that we have in this town.
Oh, you mean to come into the meeting?
Say, come to the meeting.
That would be up to their boss.
Mr. Sullivan, if that's.
Well, some of them.
I would at least like to extend the invite.
Okay. Great. Then we have some meeting minutes?
Yes. I move for the approval of the Select Board Meeting Minutes, January 21, 2025.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve as written. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Is there any other business to come before this meeting, before this board? Our next meeting is in two weeks, and then we will have another off-cycle meeting on the 25th so that we can close the warrant. Okay? So I will accept a motion to.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It is not debatable, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so, 8:25. Thank you and good night, Wareham.